Under unfinished business, we have a request by Alderman Snyder to discuss the city's health insurance and RFPs for health insurance. The discussion began February 21st, 2012, meeting council in England. It was postponed since the end of our meeting. Alderman Snyder?
Um, I don't know if this is the way I would call it.
Can you speak into the microphone, please, so we can get your desire to do this?
Um, I think we should go out for these bids because on the last, um, council meeting we had, I asked a question about a certain thing and you said we have to go out and get our best bid for our money to work. And this business was not in the City of Elville. And, um, I think we should do this in 15 years or better maybe than we've done bids. And healthcare has changed and I think we should pay this city some money if we did. It wouldn't hurt anything to give the bid.
First of all, Willard, okay, Alderman, go ahead.
Mr. Your Honor, I specifically would like to know, I filed a memo at 3 o'clock with the city clerk's office that stands for steam and cover page of suggested RFP. And ask, did it also go on the agenda?
Okay.
It's not on the agenda nor was it in fact.
Now, let me explain. I'm waiting. You were at the counter and I waved to you and you didn't say a word to me. I left. Linda Fields was out with surgery. Jennifer was off that day. Cindy went home that afternoon because her father died. Now, you didn't bother to come talk to me. I had no idea that this was, I didn't see this until the packets were put together and then there was a communication because we had a lot of people out this week with death and illness and et cetera. You never called me one time. You even, I even waved to you at the counter and you looked the other way. If you can't communicate with the mayor who ultimately is responsible for this agenda, then I, I'm sorry, it's not fair to sit here and say, "All you asked the girls," and then I asked today, "Would you please stamp this and note that the time came in?" And they did that. Now, you know what? We're having a discussion, um, and I think there's been some things said here tonight. We're going to release answer in just a second. But I, you know, like I said, you, Joe, from the moment we had orientation, I gave you my card and you refused to ever call or have a meeting face to face. You want to fly off emails or you want to make these, you know, stance here. But you could have called me and we could have talked about this and it would have been on the agenda differently if that's what you wanted.
You're gonna tell me you had no clue that?
I did not see this, Joe. I was at the doctor's office. I had some tests this week. I was back in the hospital this weekend. I did not see this.
Though.
Until today, actually, where I really, now Sharon did tell me that she told me she had this from you Friday.
This is the first you're telling me?
Friday, I saw it. But Friday, the packets were already out. We met Thursday morning and did the packets and I didn't see this Thursday morning. So my apologies, but you didn't come to me to make sure. You put it on the desk in front of one of the young ladies and then expected it to go through all the channels without, you know, communicating.
So you're, you know, you're gonna throw the staff of the city clerk?
No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
Yes, you are. They knew exactly what it was. And every request that's on the agenda tonight goes to the city clerk's office. Look at the correspondence. Dear Ms. Fields, dear Ms. Fields.
And most of that stuff is then long before, right before we do the agenda?
It doesn't matter, sir. It's a deadline. I meet the deadline. You, you, in my opinion, deliberately did not want it on.
That is not true, Joe. That is not true.
I did not deliberately. You know, and we're gonna get into it a little later this evening. You know, you have approval of your vet group, but there's nothing in this packet either.
Joe, now, let's, okay, are you, you answering remarks?
No, I intend, because there's a lot of people in this city that feel that this will be bid. There's a lot of people in this city.
We did bid.
You know, I'm talking about the broker service. A broker service and it was explained to Seadeen that if you look into different brokers, there are different prices, there are different things that can be suggested. Therefore, and that is a large portion of this. We have not had any, any true, you know, concentration of the broker service in 15 years. And that can drive place and seat. It can drive a lot of factors. It does not necessarily mean we are getting the best price for the citizens and the best plan for the employees when we're in the middle of collective bargaining and we have nothing else offer. Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve the RFP to go out for bid for broker services.
I'm not recognizing that motion at this time. Before we go further with anything, please?
I'm making a motion. There's a second.
I'll second it.
It's on the agenda. The discussion is under an old business.
Okay, so, so we have a motion and we have a second to vote on going out for an RFP.
RFP for broker and carrier service, yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
RFP for both.
Okay, do we have discussion?
I have a statement.
I'm sorry?
I have a statement.
Okay.
I want to voice my support of the motion for the request for proposal process to determine the best vacant seat for health insurance coverage for the City of Elville. The City of Elville routinely requests bids on demolition, building properties, street improvement projects and many other items. I have seen in many committee meetings and on several occasions where the city receive bids for services below projected cost and also lower than past awarded amounts for similar projects due to the current economy. Even though pricing from different carriers and third party administrators has less done through our current agents, I feel that allowing other agents to submit their proposals would ensure that the City of Elville is spending its dollars wisely. As I am confident that warmer winter cards for Greg Off and Associates has provided exemplary service in ensuring that city employees are receiving the best quality health coverage, I believe it is imperative that we compare proposals from other agencies, especially considering that health insurance costs are a major expenditure in the budget for the City of Elville. Therefore, it's my opinion that it is in the best interest of the city that this request for proposals for the City of Elville health insurance be released.
Okay.
I would like to ask if, I was told that the brokers are not paid by the city. They are paid through the insurance company.
That's correct.
Now, we know that we pay for that venture that everybody realizes that. Is that true? Does anybody argue that for you?
No, I'm gonna ask, go ahead, go ahead.
I was also told that when you go out for bid, when a broker goes out for bid, if somebody, some other broker requests exactly the same information, the insurance companies have to bid in exactly the way, the same way. If they're looking at the exact same plan. Does anybody think that's not true? Okay, so there's no financial advantage of going out for an RFP. You're making it sound like there's a financial advantage. And we've already proven that if you ask for the very same things, it will be the very same price. It's illegal for an insurance company to get one broker touching the price of another broker.
Hold it. You're not recognized.
I believe we have already had one other insurance agency step forward in the microphone tonight and say, "If we have a retired group that will save us money. Our plan is outdated. We have no zero deductible that needs to be drawn away with. There are new drug programs."
Okay, we're gonna answer, we got, you're missing, you got some misinformation. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna answer your questions.
Nothing will change the fact that we have not changed agencies in decades. All we're asking is that everybody in town have a fair shot at this contract with the city. I understand how it works, but I also understand there are variations in service. All we're asking is that everybody get a level of claim.
I would like to mention that our broker went out to 21 different companies and not heard a bid. That's the whole idea of that.
Because you assumed he would get the contract. That is not good business.
We have followed the same, okay. Alderman Hayden, I'll let you speak and then I'm gonna answer some of these questions, some of these myths.
Well, in response to Alderman, no, that is not, it is true. It is true that one carrier cannot give a different quote to another. But not all brokers deal with all the same carriers. And by this RFP and turnkey carrier bid, it provides other brokerage to go out there and seek, Mr. Gonzalez, other potential carriers that we may not even be aware of.
21 carriers are not enough. 21 bids, who made you work?
I want two other brokers that will bring in somebody else that's looking at it.
Mr. Chrysler, I'm gonna ask you to come forward in defense of some of these acquisitions. John Chrysler has been the broker for a long time. In fact, John's gonna tell you, he's been broker for three mayors before me. So why don't you go ahead, John, and explains, because there's been some things said here tonight that I think you want to, you need to address.
Sure. Um, we started under Rich Barr, um, so we are not a favorite of anybody. We've served four different mayors.
Can I make one statement? When Mr. Hayden was on the council, under Roger Cupp, you were the broker.
That's correct. And he voted for it.
Yes.
Um, but, but, you know, it was a little bid that time. We go out for bid every couple of years. We go out for bids every couple of years. And we have received quotes, you haven't been with one company. You act like you've been with one company. You've been with Blue Cross Blue Shield. You've been with GHP. You've been with United Healthcare. Back to Blue Cross Blue Shield. And now you're self insured. What we do is we take your claims and then we divide those back to the employee. The money never leaves the City of Elville. What happens is the employee sees the money go out of their check into a claims pane, a account. Those claims are then paid by Jamie out of that account. There's no other place you can go than that deal. It means that if there's $200,000 left over to the end of the year, it's your money. The City of Elville is the insurance company in this instance. And what are the point? What, you know, Chris had made the point that it's a terrible plan. If you recall, two years ago, or maybe last year even, we raised a deductible 250. The fireman briefed it and said that we can't do that because they're under contract and we have to offer the zero deductible. So that's how we wound up with the zero deductible is because we were forced to. We don't design the plans. All we do is get the bids for the contracts that you guys have negotiated. You need to negotiate better than what has been in the past. Uh, that's part of the problem. The design is old. It's, nobody's got plans like this. Um, so that's part of the problem, you know, and this part about not having a Elville agent. LRL is your agent. It has been your agent for 19 years. He lives in Elville. He pays taxes in Elville. He votes in, what ward? Stop loss. Oh, okay. So, so, you know, we are part, you know, of that stuff.
You actually live in the city, so you don't live in the city? Let me ask this question, Mr. Chrysler, to clarify something.
Yes.
Your fee as the broker is paid by the insurance, in this case, the stopgap?
Yes, the stop loss.
Stop loss, right.
And that's the only insurance you guys buy. You're taking the claims and you're buying stop loss and aggregate. Those premiums, we get a commission off of. That's it. It amounts to $69,750, which we have disclosed.
Any other broker would get the same amount if we had the same insurance.
That's correct.
Now, if, yeah, we could get, we could get different insurance if our employees took greater deductibles. But I will tell you, uh, we have nine unions. We have to negotiate with these unions, um, as it is right now. Now, we also know that healthcare is gonna change in 2014 potentially.
Yes, the healthcare reform act.
And so at that time, it's coming around the corner. We're gonna have to decide some big decisions that are gonna be in front of us.
And that's why we did two years on everything. We negotiated a two-year contract on all your things, on all your insurance coverages, except for the stop loss and the aggregate because that is based on your own experience. I don't know what that's gonna wind up being, but everything else is fixed for two years. Because in 2014, under the healthcare reform act, and who knows where that's going, uh, it's the law though right now. So under the law, in 2014, the City of Elville might want to pay a $2,000 penalty. That would amount to $710,000 and let everybody would have their own insurance. Because the state of Illinois is covering everybody at that point. You can go from $4 million to no agent, no cost, and a penalty of $710,000. I mean, that's one of the options. Our job is to bring you options.
Mr. Chrysler, I also wanna ask you this, so it's clear. You helped us a number of years ago. We were seeing rises in insurance each year, some years drastic, uh, when we were fully insured.
Up to 50%?
Up to 50%. You helped us a couple of years ago go self insured. You helped guide us and you're capable.
2007, yes.
Your license, you've got the experience, you helped us to do that. We have saved, Jamie, what do you think we've saved by doing that? $400,000 most years? We've saved the taxpayers and we've saved, Mr. Chrysler gets a slower commission by us being self insured. So this isn't, you know, he would make, if he'd sold us the full coverage. Now, a couple of weeks ago, Joe, you showed up at a meeting, that was a staff meeting. I didn't invite Alderman because if more than four would have showed up, we'd have been violation of the open meetings act and was with the unions. And you and Dean were here and I didn't say anything because we don't, we didn't have more, more, what, that knew about it. But the fireman told you about it and you were here. The fireman proposed about, John, explain the health savings.
Savings accounts.
Health savings account. You were here on that behalf.
The HSA are, you know, not a bad idea. It's a great way to save money because you take a higher deductible. But the problem when you're self insured is that $3,000 you put in there HSA is money that's gone. We depend on an employee maybe not using. If we have an employee that spends $500 out of the $3,000, that money would go back in and help other employees pay the cost. When you put it in an HSA, it's gone. That's a million something already gone, right out of, out of the pot of money. So it doesn't work under self insurance. It works very well under a fully insured program and that's what Edwardsville is, is fully insured.
And I want to also say, when Brad Mayne came to me and asked that we would listen to this other broker, we brought him in. We listened. But, but he himself, Jamie, why don't you step up here? You, Jamie's our finance director, Jamie Maitre. Why don't you explain a little bit about that process and how we did listen and what happened?
Um, that broker himself stood right here and said that the only reason you would change brokers is based on service because the commissions they get paid is the same. The quotes they get from various, the same insurance companies are the same, no matter who the broker is. He himself said, "You change based on service." He also made a comment that I made him repeat. He says, "The cost of your insurance is directly based on the richness of your benefits." And I asked him to repeat that and he did. And I said, "Okay, that's our problem. We have extremely, extremely, extremely rich benefits." No one's gonna deny that. I don't. I'm the finance director. I won't deny that at all. This other agent stood up and said he could save us money if we went to a higher deductible. We tried that. We got briefed. We have nine unions. In all of their contracts, it says we have to offer at least the same or better benefits. Like Mr. Chrysler said, if we negotiate that out, great. Maybe we can, we can do something with our insurance to save costs. What we do right now is we offer three options for insurance plans. So that, because there's several employees that complain that the costs are too great for them. So what we do is we have a zero deductible because we have to offer that by contract, excuse me, contract regulations. But we also offered a $250 deductible plan and a $750 deductible plan. Those are all current options. And if any of you can guess how many people take the $750 deductible plan? It's about 10, okay? So it's there. It's an option that they already have. They don't use it. We can't by contract right now take away the zero deductible plan. So any broker here would have to bid a zero deductible plan, at least.
If I could say one thing about the people that are on those higher deductible plans?
Stand up so you can hear it, you can get your recorder.
For the people that are on the higher deductible plan, a large portion of those are retirees. They're not even active employees that are using it. There is also a matter of admin costs that go into this. Those are, those can vary from company to company. There is also a factor that with larger groups, the city would qualify as a larger group, some companies will offer you to build in your own commission rates. That is a factor that should be considered as well. Thank you.
Well, and that is under a fully insured plan. The retirees have to be covered by contract under the city. So that's not an option unless the city wants to give us that option.
Unless the, and particularly the policeman fire, now all contracts have it.
Right. Now, what about, what are you gonna do with a 50-year-old that's disabled?
That's right.
Is he a retiree? No, he's not a retiree. He's hurt on the job. You know, we have over $400,000 we pay out a month.
We write?
To disabled.
Well, $400,000 a year, a year.
A year, yeah.
But we have, currently, right now, we have what, 12 policemen and firemen on catastrophic insurance?
Correct.
So we, right there, we're locked in to a special deal with them that we are obligated per now state law. Correct, Mr. Scranton? We have no choice. And the catastrophic insurance cost classification, I think we have seven firemen, maybe, how many, how's it break down? Seven firemen, five policemen, something like that? It's, but it's to the tune, the city pays $400,000 a year for their insurance for the rest of their life. So we, and we can't change that. So this is in the contract. This people, it's easy to say this stuff, but it's not the case. Now, Mr. Wong, I believe you were asked though to give bids a deadline, right?
Yes.
And you didn't get a minute?
I was asked to give a deadline by the 20th.
Of February.
Of February.
January 19th is when we email all the stuff to you, all the losses and everything. We've got the emails. We'll be glad to produce them, but.
I'm aware of when all the information was given to me. I'm also aware that I was told that with an RFP, I had until the 20th of March.
But here's, here's the interesting thing.
Yeah, the RFP.
Mr. Hayden's been on this council before and he's knowing that we have to wait and we have to watch. And correct me, John and Jamie, if I'm wrong, but we're waiting very cautiously and patiently until we get the third quarter results of losses so before you can really go and bid. So we can't, we can't come up, go out for bid with these carriers until just recently. Now, Joe, if you had your mindset, you wanted really make, we're in 11th hour now. We cannot not have insurance for our employees on April after April 30th. We are obligated. We have a lot of factors here with the contract that we can't drop our, we can't drop our retirees. We can't drop the people in catastrophic. These aren't options. But you could, you could have started a long time ago on, we could have started, we could have started months ago on this if you wanted to raise this question. But the other thing, the other thing the man from, the other thing the man from Edwardsville said, who was brought here because the fireman got a recommendation from Rick Willie, who used to be the fire, uh, in the union, went to become Edwardsville's chief, knew this guy. And the guy himself said, you know, I, he had customers that he's had for many, many, many years. Correct, Nancy? And he said once again, "It's about service." And if your staff and you're getting, now, understand also, folks, the 21 bids we got this year, we are, we have a 1% increase for the employees and a 1% for the city. There's not many people around that are having a 1% increase.
It was zero the year before.
It was zero the year before.
Before that. So we've had zero, zero.
With this, with this broker and with this way we've done it, with this being self insured, we have had some phenomenal return. Before that, we were going up and down every other year. And so I think there's been a little bit of misinformation out there. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor, I have to tell you, I resent that everything is a crisis. We're on an emergency. We have a deadline.
But we're in the same.
You should have put this out for RFPs six months ago, knowing the deadline was coming. You cannot say it's Mr. Hayden's fault.
I'm saying we have not put this out for a bid. We've been perfectly satisfied this council for the last number of years with the, with the broker. We've, we have, we have saved money. He has guided us. We have, we have gone through the self insured process. We saved the city about $400,000 since we've gone self insured. Uh, and we have made some great strides and the employees have had two years of a zero. The second year, they did have to, we did, most of them did because we went to the 250 deductible primarily.
Right.
But, and then this year, we got a 1% for the employee increase. We have done phenomenal.
But you don't know what else is out there because you're not willing to look.
But we do know what's out there.
Mr. Chrysler, I have one question for you. Do you personally, or does your firm make political contributions to the good government party?
Absolutely. And we, and we make them to all of our cities. We play in merit golf tournaments. We, we, we write St. Pierre County, we write 20 collegienneté. We're the largest in Southern Illinois. There's nobody writes more cities than we do, or counties, or towns.
But it doesn't make you the only qualified person.
And it makes us one of the better ones though because if you're gonna start a business.
Then what is the fear of letting someone else to the table?
There is no fear. It's just that I did all the work. I'm doing the commission already.
I understand that. I really resent it going into a meeting if you had done all the work when you had not been awarded the contract.
But you told Mrs. Holt that we have, we have.
He did not have the authorization to do that. That is a decision that is made of his council.
And then Mrs. Holt, nobody raised this question, but we, Jamie and staff, we have, John's been our broker. It's been no secret, John Chrysler's been the broker for four mayors. Um, if we would not have gotten some good service, he'd have been out the door. But we've gotten good service. We've gone through some times where, uh, you know, and you know, Alderman Hayden, you're pushing this, but you sell insurance for a living. This seems to be a bit of a conflict to me right there. You know, every, 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 well, I don't know. You talk about conflict. He called Jamie today about the roses with, about the flowers with my wife and here's an insurance man. Every email you send out with the city flag on and city business at the bottom says, "If you want a quote for your insurance." I'm not, you know, I think we're, I think we've crossed lines. You talk about crossing lines? I think it's been crossed.
It's my turn to respond.
Mr. Holt, first of all, Mr. Chrysler, just a joke.
I have a floor now.
You do not have a floor.
Yes, I do.
No, you don't. Now, I'm gonna tell you something.
Oh, what?
You guys have provided to run these meetings. It's not gonna happen. You're not recognizing this woman.
Well, when am I gonna be recognized?
When I get ready to. I'm the chairman of this meeting. Mr. Chrysler, you still have a floor.
The only thing I'll add to the RFP is I know that Joe's been in business since 2009 because that's what it says on the website for the state of Illinois. But, you know, there's something in there about the drug rebate program. Somebody asked for it. Somebody missed it. You guys get back $7,000, $8,000 every three months for prescription drug cards. You want 100% of that go to the city. We write that into our specs with our carrier. Nobody else even thought about it. So there's $20,000, $28,000 to $30,000. Jamie, you get the checks, you deposit them, goes in that same fund. We're not opening any funds. We're not taking the money. If there's ever a profit there, it will benefit the employees of the City of Elville. That's, you know, I mean, if it was a pretty good RFP, except, you know, the Snyder slap at the, of any, any money spent or any political fundraiser would be a violation of this was a little extreme. So that's all I got to say, Mayor.
And Mr. Wong, let me ask a question. I'm just curious. Because this all came up. Are you a relative of the fireman? That's the fireman?
No.
Okay, you're not. Now, different, not the same.
Not part of the mighty.
Okay, because there's a Wongland apartment, right? Okay, I just asked because it was, you know, we were told that they wanted the fireman, wanted Wongland to propose this. And like I said, I was told that Jamie told me that the stuff didn't get in in time. We were willing to let somebody, we let the man from Edwardsville come down here, but by his own admission.
I will say, I did ask about this several months, actually, no, I asked about it before December. Uh, last year, around the fall of last year, I asked about this. And I was told that information would be given out as of January 1st.
Have you ever contacted my officer to ask about?
There was emails. I know there are emails. That's critical.
Does your office have the information or do they have to actually get city information from another company? And therefore, what, asking to go into?
We don't have somebody on staff that, that has all the insurance knowledge. That's why we broker it out.
I didn't ask for the knowledge. I asked for the information about the claims.
For a broker to bid or a carrier to bid on insurance, we don't have, like, I can't tell you which employee that is, you know, who's the most money or how, or is, like, they have to get all that information from our insurance. I don't have our claims by individual, but not like, yeah, it's not based.
Yeah, because it's confidential information.
And, you know, you need to be medically approved. So, you know, when you say you can do it 30 days, you can't get medically approved in 30 days. You can't do it. can do it 30 days, you can't get medically approved in 30 days. You can't do it. Ask your company. They'll tell you that, you know, there's, there's a new answer that just popped up the other day. They're gonna ask all about that. It's gonna take you 30 days to find out where the prognosis is for the reinsurance company. So, you know, it's always moving on. It's, it's hard to, and we're guessing. It would be like me saying, I'll insure you for $10,000. That was your claim last year. If it costs us $12,000, I'll still pay it. If it costs us $6,000, we'll give you mine back. That's what this program is telling me.
Mr. Hayden, I'll let you answer your question.
First of all, Mr. Chrysler, the, the impropriety clause that you mentioned, that's pretty much in every RFP I check for health insurance throughout the state.
Never seen it.
Never seen it?
Never seen it. Oh, no.
That's interesting. Second question for you, sir. Wongland, Howard by Angel, both tell me that they for sure can get a bid by the deadline minister.
They can get you a bid, but they can't get medically approved. They're to give it. The rates that we give most of the time are estimates. The companies want to see you get closer to the deadline so they get up-to-date information on big claims. The $90,000 deductible was your bet, and you need that. We have a rate that in a couple of years. We had a fireman a couple of years ago that walked out and got hit by a car at his mailbox. It cost us over $300,000. We pay 90. After that, the reinsurance company came in and paid the rest of it. So, the companies providing are, you know, things that you really need, and they're not making expenses. St. Pierre County has, I think two vehicles is what they pay for their self-insure. So, you know, it's whatever you're comfortable with. And it's not for everybody, but it's perfect for you guys. I mean, all we do is let them in the claims and say, here's what it is. I mean, if I'm the city, I mean, I've got other self-insured clients that are bigger than you that actually have money in the bank from this. You know, you guys have not been building anything in. You're just paying the claims. And as long as you pay the claims, that's the city, the employees that have asked for.
And if you're providing the best services to the broker by going through this process, what do you have to lose?
What do you have to lose?
What do you have to lose? You're providing the best services to the broker, then what do you have to lose by going through the process?
You're gonna waste the city's time. You're gonna waste Jamie's time, because you referred everybody to Jim Snyder, Jamie, Nancy Schulte, you know, she had to learn the new system. And we raised by April 1st because of checks. Nancy has to put this in the system so that we can take the money out of their check. So, I've got nothing to lose. I wish somebody would have said it, you know, Joe, you invited to the meeting. Why don't you go into the meeting and say that?
Well, the meeting, you were told at 2:30 on a Friday.
No, I said, I wait till after 5:00. If somebody can't make it, we'll leave them in by 5:00. We were still there.
We had less than one full business day.
So, you know, I said, I'll come at 6:00 if they need.
And we, we squeeze it in to try to make it.
Okay, but Mr. Mayor, you cannot complain on one hand that you couldn't get something done because there was not enough time, and then penalize us for not getting...
I'm not watching you. I'm just...
But you're complaining that you could not rearrange your schedule just to join me on such short notice.
You didn't even call back?
Yes, I did. After the fact. Go ahead. Say your comments. Then we'll move on.
You asked why I didn't do this sooner? I had no clue we were even doing anything like that. And that's another failure of your administration to communicate with members of the class that we're even talking about. The first I heard that we were even doing anything with insurance was through the fireman who told me that there's a meeting going on.
We do this...
This should have been going here, Mayor, through the finance committee. It should have been updated throughout this whole segment of what is going on. This is a financial question. There's no communication.
I put you on the finance committee, and you could have asked these questions. We've not hidden anything. We've done it this way for the seven years I've been mayor, the seven years you've been mayor.
Did you say we started with questions?
We did it under when you ran the council.
Why isn't the staff performing this boomer act with health insurance? And I think the staff, I just want to say, you know, the question, you know, I think it's a fair and legitimate question in relation to expenditure, because I could tell you, if you want to talk about conflict of interest, if I was mayor and owner of business, I wouldn't want the city above buying anything from my business.
Well, they didn't. They, they...
But the point of the matter is on your other accusation, Mayor, I paid for my emails. Both of my accounts, I paid for them with my own money. The webpages were paid for with my own money, and the city flag is not a registered trademark. Last I checked, neither is that flag nor that flag. The city pays for your emails. The city pays for your cars and your guests.
This comes across as official business. Has somebody already called for a question? We have a motion, don't, yes, Mr. Elmore?
I just got a question first of all. We have these 11 bids here, and you picked up the census in January?
Yes, I received the census in January. It was up to, all my information that I received was through December 31st.
So, we're better 35, 40 days since you had the census?
Yes.
Do you have any results of the census?
As, as far as...
A bid?
A bid? Yes, I can provide a bid. I need a little bit more information from the city. I have requested from several companies. I do provide bids as of this week. I did receive from Wongland. Now, to give you more in-depth bids, I would need some more details as far as claims that are on your major claims if you want those things. But I could provide you with a preliminary bid tomorrow.
Are you talking about self-insured programs, or are you talking about...
Yes, I'm talking about a self-insured program. I have a...
$90,000, with a $90,000...
Add a $90,000.
Because we have 11 bids daring us right now.
Yes.
You can provide 12 tomorrow. Is that what you're saying?
I'm not sure all the companies that they went through. I could provide companies for, we're IQ-based companies that I've...
And would they include HealthLink? Because you can't use HealthLink. We've already used them. Can you do it with insurance companies that you guys have already went to?
I think that goes back to my statement of, I don't know what companies we need, so I couldn't say that I can provide you the two. They may have been covered. I know for a fact the city is using a, has an administration cost of $25, or $26 right now.
No, it's actually...
Effectively made first.
Yeah.
We have two, we have two TPA's here that ran 11 bids through us. And 100% isn't from Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's not from Warmwood Chrysler. It's something we're trying to do to build saves. It's self-imposed. I don't know if people really understand. We've asked for this 1%, so we can build up...
And right now, the city is running a good number as far as self-insure goes. We don't think that you should come up with self-insured plans. 70, you're running at about 70% number. That is good. I know the city did for a number of years go well above that, well above 100% number. I'm not saying that you come up with self-insured plan. That is not what I said. I am saying that there could be other companies with different administration costs that you haven't been presented with. Again, I know where the city was at right now. I'm working off the information I was getting. That's all I can do is work off the information I do.
But you understand, you have better understanding of the city than listening that we just can't say because it'll give us cheaper insurance that we can get rid of the retirees. That's not an option with our, with our union contracts.
I am also under belief that the retirees are paying for it out of their own pocket. Am I correct in that?
I understand.
They get it for out of their pocket.
Well, yeah, out of pocket.
Now, I understand their contract. They have a contract. They have obligations from the city for that contract, and they are able to stay on. However, if they are allowed the chance to look at another plan that they could be interested in, I'm sure that they would be interested in seeing it. From our own personal insurance, Wongland Insurance, we handle these retirees for the St. Louis, the police city fire for the city of St. Louis. They've been happy with us for a number of years. Retirees are something that we do deal with. I'm just saying, there's ways you can still save money, and I'm not saying that they have to save it, but there's not an option to make a decision.
And we've done, we've tried to actually, then go on to Medicare and... Absolutely. It's just, and retirees are not to help you through.
I am well aware of that.
And your third-party administration would not be either one of the two that we quoted? Got the quotes from, it's really getting the quotes from the TPA.
I am aware of that also. I only know of WAS right now.
No, we're fine. Basically, Blue Cross Blue Shield, UnitedHealthcare, mutual medical Peoria, we use the AS that you said.
The next one?
Oh, IPMP. I knew. IPMP benefits. They are a new one that came down a couple of years ago, and they bought a company called Total Global Benefits.
I got 26 years in this business, so I knew a few people in this business. And I did a little shopping myself just with our package. Of the six or seven very close friends of mine that would have loved to bid on it, all put it right back on my desk and said, there's no point. And that was well over, well over a month ago. But if you had it for a month, and you're saying you can produce a quote tomorrow, you know, we could roll out 100 quotes.
Mr. Chairman, would you clarify your point? What they might say?
My point, oh, why the, my, my insurance people that I work with?
Yes.
They said that what you have is a Ferrari, one called it a Ferrari, and said that you've got a great plan, and that they did acknowledge that Warmwood Chrysler does have a distinct advantage in preparing these quotes because they have all these companies. These are good companies. Blue Cross Blue Shield plans very good. Understand that we're under this union contract. Understand that we are, as a city, are opposing 100% to build up the fund. They understand that the $90,000 deductible keeps our rates at that steady amount that we can count on to not be a roadkill strike. And they said they could not do any better. It could be, just like all these quotes, all these 11 bids that we have here in front of us range from 3.7, the highest one I think is 4.2. These are pretty tight bids. And 11 of them, 11?
No.
But if we want a 12, I would not, I'm not gonna stand in the way. Somebody's gonna waste my time doing it. Bring it on. Let's, let's, if you can produce a bid tomorrow, I'll pat you on the back and say, let's look at it. But...
That seems really unrespectful to give somebody one day to do something.
He said...
And, and he's, yeah, he's acknowledged, he's been working on it for a month.
I, from all the information, and again, the numbers I can produce tomorrow are based off the information I have. Most companies would want an extra, some of the extra information. Obviously, going up to December, that's only eight months of coverage for your current plan. I mean, microsecond. Those are, from the numbers that I have, that's what I've been working on. And again, I mean, you say you go out for this every year.
We have. I mean, it's the same, we've got Mr. Chrysler.
How can you say you go for, go out for it every year when you have people writing two- and three-year contracts for you?
Well, we've had, we've locked a couple of them, and John Wright, and we thought was...
This is a two-year.
This is a two-year.
So, we're just trying to get to 2014 because...
Because potentially all gonna change.
It might not be paid. There won't be insurance companies as you know it today. There won't be a lot.
Be a lot.
No, no, I think, you know, just about everybody. Here's an article out of the, of the review, the NFF here, insurance company. Everybody will be in a care, accountable care organization. That's the newest thing. So, what does UnitedHealthcare go? They go and require a company that does this. You're gonna be dealing with groups. You're gonna be dealing with hospitals, doctors, large groups that are just like the insurance companies. But remember, the, you're limited to what you can make on your, under Obamacare or, you know, Health Care Affordability Act. You're limited. So, you know, it makes it a little bit tougher, but it'll be, you want to, you just won't know it as we know it today. You don't have one plan for December 11th that everybody will be covered under, and then there's several offshoots that can come out with that. Everybody is waiting for the beginning of 2013 because that's when the state of Illinois will have theirs out. I don't know what the copay is gonna be, deductible, anything else. Once we know that, the insurance companies might want to jump in like they do with Medicare and cover the differences. So, maybe what we'll be doing is, okay, you're covered under the state now, fireman, we'll pay for your supplement, or something along those fashions. That's probably what we're looking at. You have to know it because you read the paper about the St. Louis firemen and, and what a mess they're in for quotes that happened 20 years ago. You just can't do some things. And we are just relating the information is all we do.
And I would like to underline what Mr. Chrysler said. We need to do a better job negotiating with our contracts, or these zeros.
Well, but it's gonna be easy. All of a sudden, 2014, everybody flips. The city gets a $2,000 penalty to the federal government. $710,000 per person, I'm 355, $710,000, and walk away. Now, that's gotta scare the unions because they're gonna say, wait a minute, we don't want them to do that. We're gonna be meeting not these zero deductible plans? They're gone. We'll be matching whatever the state of Illinois is on. So, it might be a standard 500 or $1,000 deductible. That might be the norm. That'll make our rates go way down anyway. So, we're gonna be better off in 2014, no matter what, no matter, no matter what happens, unless it's a pre-courts cheese down in June, we'll say.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, all right? Was there a, was there a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alderman made a motion seconded by Alderman Schneider, to go out for bid for RFP for a broker and carrier service.
Okay, so we have it by the RFP tonight. Now, we vote for this, get that motion, then we have to, I'm not sure where we're gonna be far as the timeline, far as getting health insurance for everybody. I can't promise. It is late in the game. So, the first motion here tonight is that we would take Alderman, Alderman, Alderman got a motion.
I would ask Alderman Hayden, Alderman Schneider, if we can come up with amendment. If I could throw it out there, if you decline it, we decline it. It's fine. We have somebody that's working on it, 35, 40 days into it. Can we just encourage an extra bid from this gentleman here who's taken the time to come to this meeting? He's already worked on it. Joe, you know, we're not gonna get a bid. I mean, we're not gonna get a bid.
We can sit here all night saying we want, we work, we have health insurance for our employees.
By my amendment, for me, can we allow this gentleman another, you said a day, but let's say 10 days to submit a bid to City Hall? Is, that is my question to you as the amendment, to opening it to the entire free world, I guess, for everybody to bid, that we're not getting a response from. We've got somebody who's got a little time invested in it. I appreciate it.
Alderman, yeah, just this one gentleman?
Can we do that, Mr. Schreick? Can we open it up to one person, extra bid?
It could have been a strict bid procedure, you're coding, but the problem I see is he has access to the bids. I assume he has bids we are gonna receive.
But if you're giving him 10 days, this is only 15 days, this RFP. So, we're saving the cost of a newspaper advertisement is all.
I mean, you're, you're not giving anybody 15 days. But I'm just pointing out that you can do that what you want. That's pretty nice. You can tell them, oh, we're not gonna see the bids in 15 days.
Howard by Angel and Mr. Wongland, they're gonna sign the contract. But it's written, brokers out there, it's written practically.
And be approved by the, by the, it be backed up, like you said, John?
Well, our quote's on the table. I mean, we're exposed, and we're still doing the commission, so you could do whatever you want.
They don't meet the criteria in your others, then they don't meet the criteria. But if they do, we're giving two more programs a chance to at least provide.
And we're looking like we are really serious holding for business.
We are very serious.
Now, so you have a state company that does this.
We've had different company carriers. We've had the same broker. And the brokers, the brokers, understand, the broker, ladies and gentlemen,'s rate is fixed by the insurance carrier. We don't, we don't pay them. And so, it's not like he's, you know, that's, that's not, it's there, okay? And he's actually taken a cut because he's helped guys to be self-insured. He could have made more if he sold some fully insured plans. Correct, Mr. Chrysler?
True. We were $82,000 down from last year.
If I could say just one thing to that, from 1997, Wongland Insurance did come before this council on the post-self-insured as well. So, we tried to get it to the council to do that that time.
We've got, we've got two people, the insurance, we don't, we've spent thousands of dollars in advertising with this, and basically, opening up, looking through the programs and potentiality, whether of what other carriers that they could possibly bring to the table. They can't meet it, then it's a moot call.
Where are the two?
Wongland, the group that's in fire, Wongland, they say, they...
Who's that?
Terry Hall.
This gentleman, Edwardsville, said we have a great plan?
Yeah, well, he said that, you know, he doesn't, he's self-insured. He couldn't name one self-insured account that he had.
Fully does.
Fully insured, you could fully insured, yeah.
They don't, they don't fit, they don't fit. They certainly fit.
So, we have a motion to remind council within a very short period of time that 200 citizens and city employees sign a request saying, please, do not have RFP.
Well, and that was worded in, in a way that you couldn't answer. It said, you... It said, "You will save money and you will get better coverage." And you know that's not always the case, but you said you will. It's like the old question, "Do you still feed your wife?" You know, you can't answer the question. Look at it. Doesn't even say you need it.
Your Honor, I'd like to call for a question. Okay, so the question's been called. Now, is there, I understand there's amendment? Mr. Mr. Elmore asked, "Did you accept an amendment?" No, I think we should just go out there. So, there's no amendment. You're asking to go out for general, all out RFP?
We, the other side, city employees, the other side, city...
Hey, hold it, hold it. We're not, we're not, we're not reading that now. That's not the point.
It, it's, it's an accusation.
Okay, okay.
We understand taxpayer residents, businesses, owners, and other concern, and we appear by petition, City Hall, elected citizens, and these dashboard. For RFP, to be qualified in steel bids for health insurance, broker services, and consulting, of which will lead to additional proposals for bids for health insurance provided that can possibly bring better and more cost efficient insurance to city employees and save taxpayer dollars being proposed on March 5th.
Who wouldn't be, are they? Who wouldn't be?
And why, you know, we vote for the RFP and, and, and...
Question's been called. If you vote for this, we will open up the RFP process. If not, we're gonna stay on task to, well, we're actually, we're coming back to vote on Mr. Chrysler's, uh, motion because, like I said, I'm not the first. We, we just, we've been dealing with him and it's been through the process. And in the past, you know, uh, staff and the unit have called in and we always met and et cetera. Um, so we have a motion to second. Roll call vote. If you vote yes, you're voting for, if you vote aye, you're voting for going out for RFPs as Mr. Hayden's requested. If you vote no, you're voting against the proposal. What's the deadline on the RFP, sir?
The 20th.
20th of March. Roll call.
Alderman Heisler?
No.
Kinsella?
No.
Meyer?
No.
Holt?
Aye.
Anderson?
No.
Bridgewood?
No.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Silspie?
No.
Hayden?
Aye.
Cybert?
No.
Martenson?
No.
Elmore?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Musgrove?
No.
Arlet?
No.
Raise your hand if you voted, voted no.
10 no, 6 aye.
10 no, 6, raise, raise some high, I'll make sure we got a double check here because she doesn't get called in our time. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. The ayes have it, I mean, I'm sorry, they voted no. The noes have it and it's, and there's no, there's no RFP for this, for this situation. 10 to, 10 to 6. Okay. Moving on, this place is...
I have a question about the white flag law too. When we presented, was the intention for it to be used strictly outside or was it intended to be used within the business of the law?
You're gonna have to ask Main Street Development if we have that plan. Uh, we approved it for the positioning and target, but I'd, I'd have to go back and see if they have the information on it. Somebody to give you. I don't want, I don't want to misquote. You know, I know it's, I believe it was primarily designed for outside.
Which I think if it's on here, with our thick gray walls, it is common that it's
I think, but I, I don't want, I think double Main Street wrote the plan and I think we'd have to ask that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Can we get his pass on the website? Uh, Sharon's not here tonight, but Debbie, you got, you guys are moving forward, we get the parts and the rest?
We have signed the contract.
We have a committee and I honestly, I'll be honest with you, and I, uh, all the intentions. We, we do have a, a committee that I will have appointed, uh, with a, a variation of several of you I will ask. I got a, I got a proposed list. Sharon and I live in Fields and live, like I said, out with some surgery and, uh, Sharon's not here tonight, but, but we will have that out in the next few days for that to be approved and done. It's just appointment of a, of a staff committee where we're, we're, so, Matt, you'll hear about that in the next few days. I did, I just wrote Jane a note to ask her to put on the... That if, if we can do that, I'll have that proposal there, just don't you see that? Okay? Okay, anything else?
Yes, I, uh, two weeks ago asked, uh, information by an email, given my private account email to you and your staff. Didn't receive response or valid FOIA request also about the, uh, RFP information. And I still don't have the information.
Did you get any information yet?
No, sir.
Oh, I only put it together. Uh, it's due Wednesday. Uh, had you once again called me and had a discussion. You know, we play this email game.
It all works both ways, yeah?
Well, I don't, I don't know what you're thinking. If you, if you want to know about our meeting, our agents are asking for information. Well, anyway, we have it put together. Now, you also demanded or made a statement that you want me to give you a written statement of what we did regarding the carnival, uh, situation a year ago. And, and...
I asked a copy of the permit that was issued.
We... It was on private property, unfortunately. I saw it was in the arguments. Right, she? I don't, I don't...
Didn't qualify for a permit, so I asked for a statement stating that it...
Well, it's not in our ardentice. We don't qualif, we don't have an ardentice currently. That's why I want to change it. We don't have an ardentice that deals with carnivals on private property and that's what surprised me. So, we're gonna amend it that, uh, in the future because these, these types of events greatly impact the police department in service to protect the community. So, you know, it may be over governing, some will think, but I don't think you should be allowed to have a carnival on private property if our police department's gonna have to staff extra people to handle the carnival.
Didn't you approve that carnival?
I did not approve that carnival. They didn't need approval according to the current ardentice.
All right, how come ordinance and people, we have waited and waited and waited for Mr. Sprague or Mr. Flynn to send us an ordinance and we can't even talk about it?
Well, you, you will have an ardentice. We have a draft now and, and we'll have it to all of you. I'll get it out to all. We have just had a chance. We have, I have a lot, a lot of different things, okay?
Yes, sir, but really, six to eight months seems excessive.
Well, and once again, you know, if, if this was such a hot topic a couple of months ago, I wish one of you would have picked up the phone and called me and we would have dug it out off the desk or wherever it was and we would have talked about it. But other things have taken other priorities. When you get how many emails a day from, from some people that have all kinds of requests for stuff and we're, staff's researching and doing this and doing that, uh, you know, and FOIAs, we're getting FOIAs by the grow. Uh, it takes a lot of time.
That's what open trouble is for.
We're, we're doing it, but you understand, we're also very elite. We don't have a lot of people to do, uh, just constant research every day. We're going to have the ardentices to all of you in the next few days. And, Mr. Hayden, you'll have your, you'll have your FOIA before Wednesday.
Okay, but FOIA and, and ordinance is coming from our legal staff or two totally...
They didn't come from me. I didn't write the documents.
The ardentices were drafted by the police chief. It was his recommendation. And, and before I sent them out, I wanted legal to look at them to see, and, and quite honestly, as you're well aware, you know, we, I'm not gonna lie, they got buried on a pile. Mr. Mr. Flynn has, you know, been extremely, uh, behind. He's, he's been off a little bit and Mr. Mr. Sprague has been, we've had one thing after another that's bumped in front of this, these types of things that we, you know, you go to deal with the current problems and times of the day.
Can I ask a question?
Hold on, don't just shut up.
Any kind of suspense file?
Any kind of what?
The federal government, every secretary of like a, a budget head has suspense file on their desk saying, "This is due by then, this is due by then, this is due by then."
We, we never...
Not things shifted at the bottom of the pile.
Well, I...
It doesn't seem very professional to use that as...
We, we are very professional and, and yes, this thing has taken a backseat for a while and we will get it done. Uh, and that's, that's all I can tell you. Yes?
The only reason I said, I would have my hand up, because you didn't see me last time. And my question is on the, um, parades and organization, the things that go on downtown. My question back then was, I wanted to ask what? What is the legal things that can happen to the city since we are charging some and we're not charging others? Is there anything they can say that we're playing...
We're charging for services. We're not, we're...
That's what I'm saying on some of the parades and the things.
Well, as requested, and I've said this, we are putting together, my administration, and I got a draft on my desk I'm working on to have to finance by the finance meeting best I can put in writing. It's been a work in progress. I had a long talk with Laura the other day. There's been no story, but, uh, explaining how we are getting, how we've gotten to where we are with the fee structure of these debts, trying to recuperate some of these costs. And it's, uh, I'll have that in writing. We're working on it and it will be in the packet for finance, which you all probably get by what Friday. So, yes, ma'am.
The question is, and really has been answered, what can happen to the city? Can we be sued by some that say, "All right, you're charging them and you're not charging, or you're charging us and you're not charging them," like the, uh, State Patrick State Parade? I was here for that finance meeting and the man suggested, "Is the only reason you're charging us because we're Catholic?" These were questions that were asked and I'm only asking, can the city be liable?
It's still a relatively new event. It takes extra police. There's a lot of celebrating. There is a lot of, of partying. And Chief Clay and I have agreed in recent years that if we don't have ample police officers at that parade and throughout that, uh, early afternoon, we're very vulnerable for fights and, and situations because there's just, it's a fun day for a lot of people, but some people don't know when to call it when. So, we, it takes a little bit more police. It's not, we don't quite have the threat, although we have a very much bigger program, uh, when Santa Claus comes to town and we kick off Christmas. Uh, we don't have as much, uh, partying, uh...
So, then the, they should have been answered, "Well, it's you party too much."
No, I didn't say you party too much. There, there is a need for police and it's a relatively newer parade and, and, and you by your own token, you're all, all of you said, "We need to start to recoup these things." We're trying to come up with what's fair. Uh, I don't believe it's fair, and I'll put this in my, in writing and you'll see it, I don't believe it's fair to try to go back now after almost 70 years and, and, and charge somebody to the Christmas parade or the Shriner's Parade, which is 100 years this year. These have been Belville traditions by mayors for many years on that wall, way before me. I think some things like that quality of life, the Memorial Day Parade, I have no intention of charging anybody.
What should be?
Well, you're gonna have a chance in finance to discuss this and, and, but it's a work in progress. Before I was mayor, nobody charged a dime for any reimbursement for police or street department services. Nobody. Since 2008, the first we've ever recuperated any of this, recouped.
Ardentice is saying, "I'm gonna treat my oldest kid one way and my youngest kid another just because my oldest is the oldest." That ardentice just doesn't work.
And I, well, you want to charge them all? 100%?
Yes, sir. No, I want a fair and level playing field.
I believe we can do it. No. The finance team is gonna have a chance to work it out. You'll, you'll see that. Okay. Now, going on to motor fuel claims. We have motor fuel claims in the amount of $2,316.32. What's your pledge?
Thank you, Jamie.
Motion, my Alderman Cybert, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, my Alderman Martenson, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Heisler?
Aye.
Kinsella?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Holt?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Bridgewood?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Silspie?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Cybert?
Aye.
Martenson?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Musgrove?
Aye.
What she cares. This time, I put on here a motion to approve Warner-Winter Chrysler, Gregoff Associates to continue as the insurance broker for the city through 2014. And John explained, "With Benefit Administration Systems LLC as a third-party administrator for our health insurance plan." We've got a two-year deal worked out with a 1% raise for the employees and a 1% for the city. It's a good deal. We also heard tonight explain that by the time it all shakes out, who knows with the Supreme Court whether it'll change or not, but in 2014, potentially, everything changes. So, we're gonna have to re, re, uh, rethink how we do everything if all that follows suit. I got this motion on here because of all these issues and the stuff being raised. We've got, in my opinion, have to move on. Now, I won't deny it. I don't recall in the past number of years I've been on the council that we voted for John's continuation. I think we would have probably voted to get rid of him if we didn't like his service. Maybe that wasn't the perfect way to do it, but it's been done that way for years by many mayors. Uh, when you were on the council, you, you guys apparently went out for RFP, but he still was the one that was chosen, um, when you were, and, and as he said, I believe you voted for him. So, the vote here, the motion here I'm asked now is to approve Chrysler, Chrysler, uh, Winter Chrysler as stated here, ask the, the person to continue with for the next two years and the, and, uh, BAS, the Benefit Administration System LLC as the third-party administrator. Do I hear a motion? Motion, my Alderman Meyer, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, my Alderman Cybert, do I hear any new discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Why is this coming from you and not from the committee?
Because I think that what we're doing with, it's never come from committee. It's always been, we've had this done. He's done the work. Technically, right now, in my opinion, or I think legal opinion, uh, he's already done the work. If we would change this right now, we would still owe him...
Absolutely not.
Well...
No, sir, you did not have the authority. You just took that.
We have made it the same way we've done it. We have, nobody has raised the question until the last couple of days about changing it.
Your honor, this legislative branch has let the executive branch get away with way too much, but the council body is made up of different people.
Well, and nobody, you know what? Timely wise, we, we gotta get this done and we got a good deal.
Mr. Mayor, you cannot keep creating crises in order to get your way.
I'm not getting my way. It's been the way the council's been doing it for a long time. We have a motion and we have a second. Do you have another comment, Alderman Hayden?
This is new. What, what are, you got your statement here on the, what are we voting for? I don't, I don't see...
You're going to go ahead and recognize...
I don't see a contract, Your Honor, I don't see, I don't see what their services are gonna be in, in writing to me, and what they're gonna perform, or what they're gonna do. I'm voting on...
There, there is no contract, what we do is, we're the middleman here, the city of Velveld gets a VAS to see who they sign the contract with, and that's the only contract you're in.
How can I, and Alderman, judge your services, I don't know what you're pledging to do.
The exact same contract that you signed last year.
I haven't seen one, sir.
Well, I, I, that's not my job.
I'm, I'm just a man, I...
Yeah, I don't do it.
I've not seen a contract, I've not seen an agreement, we have nothing in front of us, other than a...
We've approved it through the budget process, Jamie, is this not correct in the past?
And it should help the polls.
And with the changes here, with trouble we're getting into with all the, and you saw the councils vote for ten to six, not to go out for RFP. We, 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 we've got precious time here to make sure our employees aren't without insurance. And, and with the budget, you know, right now, with everything going, I, I don't know how long the budget sits, we haven't had to do this in the past, because it's always been approved through the budget process. Is that correct, Mr. Sprague? Jamie, do you remember if we did it originally last year? And let me...
Is anything over ten thousand dollars that's supposed to be out for bid, and should we not have a contract? I mean, should we not learn with the, um, internet, the website and that, we didn't have a contract in this word of mouth, and it got us in trouble?
Nancy said she's got a copy of it, if you wanna see last year. We, we don't give you a contract until you approve it, and when you approve it, then we give you the contract, so, I don't know what...
And it's with BASS and health?
It's with BASS, it's a health link, I mean, we haven't changed anything, benefits, nothing. So, we can, you wanna copy that?
I've got a question for the city attorney.
Get it to him, Mark.
It, it does think, uh, the city attorney, anything over ten thousand dollars is supposed to have...
Over the words, got nothing to do with insurance.
What's that?
You don't have to bid insurance.
Not to bid insurance.
Profession, same as the city attorney.
Everybody was offered the meaning, right?
Yes.
Perfect attendance of the insurance people?
No, we, 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 and we, we answered questions, and we did, uh, we did it with smaller groups because with the, still the unions and the contracts that were being negotiated, but depending what the con, the, the dialogue and where the discussions went, we didn't want to breach anything with the unions, so we did it, and, and based in three all-in-one time, and, and, and answered questions, asked questions. Okay. We have a motion in the second to, uh, continue our relationship with, uh, with Chrysler, uh, Winter, and, and, um, I will produce for you a copy of what we've had, but this has been an ongoing relationship, and, uh, I, I got a motion in the second, but it's passed in the past.
You're saying you're gonna produce...
I'll give you a copy of what we had signed in the past, I'll give you a copy, we'll get you a brand new one.
So, we will have a new contract.
We'll have a new, I'll provide each of you a copy of it, okay? Okay. Roll call. Now, first of all, an aye vote is to affirm that you're voting to approve, let the mayor sign the agreement with Warner, Winter, Chrysler, uh, and, and the no vote would be against that, so, roll call.
Alderman Heisler?
Aye.
Kinsella?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Holt?
No.
Anderson?
Aye.
Bridgewitz?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Hart?
No.
Silsby?
Aye.
Hayden?
No.
Cybert?
Aye.
Martenson?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Schneider?
No.
Musgrove?
Aye.